All right. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. The 18th Amendment, the 100th Amendment, and the 12th Amendment with the 13th Amendment.
Call the roll please. Mr. Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ori.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Ping.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Bateman.
Here.
Here.
Jeez, look at these. Welcome, everyone. With us, we have our Assistant City Manager Chris Weinich, Director of Finance Mark Medler, Councilman Clark, City Manager Dave Kennedy, City Solicitor Joe Braun, Chief of Police Michael Gabrielson, Marketing and Communications Coordinator Krista Rose, Public Works Director Scott Wisby, Assistant Public Works Director Sean Hartness, Our City Engineer Kelsey Richards, And former council members Kent Blair and Todd Osborne, and Michael Colangelo is here from our Finance Commission. Think I got everyone. God sakes. All right, welcome, everyone. Um, all right, so I guess first we'll do Mr. Wisby.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, we're here to honor Chuck Radke. Twenty-five years of service. You want to come on up, Chuck? So, twenty-five years, he's been here for quite a while. Uh, we have a few employees, maybe two or three, that be in the timeframe. But twenty-five hard years. So, he's been through the brunt of it. Uh, we had some challenging times back in the day, and uh, we've had a lot of, a lot of severe weather that we've weathered through. And Chuck's always there. Uh, he, he knows the city as well as anybody does. Uh, there's not anything in the city that he's not capable of doing. So, it's a, it's an honor to be here to uh, have his twenty-fifth. Um, I don't know if I'll be here for your thirtieth. He can go before I can, probably, so. Oh, Chuck, he prepared a speech, too.
We have something for you.
We have that.
Thank you.
And I have no idea what this is. Should he open it here, Mr.?
He has to.
You have to open it. We'll hold this for you.
Yep. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything? No, nothing? We're gonna take a picture with him.
I'm not for speeches.
You have to take a picture with him.
That's fine.
Hold that. All right, well, congratulations. Congratulations.
I know.
I was gonna say, where's all the chat?
Congratulations.
I'm gonna be your side.
So, you know how we had that discussion about the appropriation?
Yeah.
And whether or not we needed, you know.
All right, Kaia Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Kaia Bergen. I am the Loveland Branch Manager at the library. And I just wanted to talk about, uh, we have some new technology at the library with our self-checks and our self-payment system to make it even more easier for people to get their materials. But not only do we have new technology, uh, we have new customers coming in, 'cause um, if you didn't know, or you also use our Sims location, that branch has been demolished. Um, and it will be rebuilt much bigger and better. But in the meantime, we are servicing Sims and Loveland customers, even though Sims does have a temporary space of over on Governor's Way. Um, and also, if you know quilters, because um, the Loveland Branch Library will be celebrating its twenty-fifth year of doing a quilt show in May. So, please let them know that they can get ready for that. It will be a literary theme for this year, so please spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Kai. Chuck and your lovely wife, you may have noticed your boss has slipped out the back. You're allowed to do the same. You do not have to stay for this meeting. We will not be upset, I promise. All right, next is a review and approval minutes from the November twelfth meeting. Are there any changes, additions?
Move to brew's room.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. All right, one of the couple second readings. Want to read the first one? Ordinance amending Loveland Code of Ordinance is section one-one-one point zero-nine, fire and emergency medical service fees. All right, is there any further comment on this ordinance? Call the roll, please. Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-one is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. All right, read the next ordinance. Ordinance amending council member salaries beginning with the next elected council. Any further comment on this ordinance? All right, call the roll, please. Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman. Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-two is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Medler.
Thank you, Mayor. For you is a resolution for expenses for the twenty-twenty-five costs for our budgeting software, ClearGov. Since the amount is over fifteen thousand, it requires council approval. The amount is twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars. This is the exact same amount that we paid in twenty-twenty-four.
All right, is there any comments or questions? Hart?
Didn't we have a contract for, was it three years on that?
Yes, so I believe the next year would be the same, and then after that, it's a three percent inflator.
Per year, or?
So.
After next year, it'd be three percent per year?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Read the resolution, please. Resolution authorizing payment of annual license support and maintenance fees for the city's budgeting software. Call the roll, please. Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Resolution ninety-three is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Medler.
Next item is again an expense over fifteen thousand that we will be spending for twenty-twenty-five for our software maintenance that we have with Civicus CMI. This includes our financial software um, for our fixed assets, utility billing, everything that Finance Department uses on a daily basis. The amount is twenty-seven thousand six oh-two and eight-nine cents. It is a seven and a half percent increase.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Hart?
Is there any possibility of any like a cross utilization of either one of these programs? Like, does, does CMI do what ClearGov does, or ClearGov do what CMI does? Is there any?
So, these are gonna be pretty separate. The one thing I, I might say is that um, for twenty-six, I'm anticipating this might go down slightly, because we've had to keep the CMI portion of the payroll function, that we, we used to use the CMI payroll function, but we've had to keep it open and pay maintenance on it, just for the historical information, since we have obviously, our records retention information for payroll is pretty robust. This is the last year, I think, that we're, we're going to have to keep that open. So, in twenty-six, well, that item will be dropping off, and we might see some savings.
But you don't feel like there's any, there's not really like any way to use both those, one of those programs to do both things?
I don't think so.
Fair enough.
Anyone else? Read the resolution, please. Resolution authorizing payment of annual license support and maintenance fees for the city's financial software. Call the roll, please. Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Resolution ninety-four is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Weinich?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the city has been with Velocor Services since two thousand twelve as our IT managed service partner. Um, they provide us with basically um, all the, all the support, all the management um, behind the scenes for our IT across all of our departments. They provide sixteen hours um, of, of uh, of actual being on-site. So, two days a week, they're on-site for us. Um, they're available for us basically all the time um, as far as email, you know, emailing them, calling them. So, the sixteen hours isn't really indicative of what they, what they provide us. Um, just kind of wanted to give you a background on what they do for us. Um, our last contract with them was signed in two thousand seventeen. And that current contract, or lack thereof, expired at the end of twenty-twenty-two. They've actually been performing the same services under the same agreement since then. No issues. Um, they don't really have, you know, they, they didn't have any issues. Um, but they did, they did approach us and did talk to us about, hey, you know, we haven't had any pricing increases since two thousand seventeen. Um, can we, you know, we want to offer you up a proposal uh, to continue going forward with a new contract for three years, and then an additional two potentially. Um, so, they also recognized our needs have expanded. We, we've gone, we've added twenty-two new workstations. That doesn't mean we've added twenty-two new employees. That simply means we've got a lot of other, you know, other computers, other things, whether it be, you know, housing different, housing cameras, housing, you know, different servers. We've added twenty-two new workstations. Um, we've, we've, we've recognized our cybersecurity posture needs to be increased. So, we asked for several aspects of the contract to identify um, software and disaster recovery options for us, so that we can put ourselves in a better position. Um, you've seen over the last several years, unfortunately, several municipalities across the nation um, have been hit with ransomware and different things, and um, as I clarified with our current insurance provider with, through PEP, you know, we're not really covered, you're not really covered for what you owe in ransom. Um, that's not covered. So, if we would ever get hit by something like that, whether they take the water system down, take the billing system down, uh, you know, and hold us, hold us, hold us for ransom, um, that'd be a tough position to be in. So, we wanted them to look at, what, what are we missing? What do we need to, to add? So, in this proposal, you'll see several, several new line items um, that were not there in the previous, the previous proposal. Um, the monthly cost, what, you know, what's it get down to? We're going from five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month to eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-four. Now, keep in mind, this includes twenty-two new workstations um, and the disaster recovery and cybersecurity aspects that we did not previously have. Those extras alone, so the twenty-two new workstations, the disaster recovery, cybersecurity, that out, that adds, adds one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars a month. The rest of that cost increase is basically a twenty-one percent increase since two thousand seventeen. If you take that over those five, those six, seven years, eight years, um, that, that's really about a three percent increase year over year. Um, so it's a fairly, fairly fair increase in our estimation. Um, internally here, we do have, we do, we did create a internal IT board, um, which we started up, kind of, I know they had it before I was here, but we kind of started it up. We tossed this out to the IT board members, too, this whole proposal. Um, there, there's a, there's a consensus that we do, we do like working with Velocor. We like the services they provide. Um, and we, we do want to continue moving forward with, with their services if, if council allows. Um, to break it down even farther, basically, our annual cost is going from sixty, sixty-seven thousand, uh, about sixty-seven thousand six fifty to about a hundred and five, uh, oh-five. Um, that is, that is an substantial increase. Um, we have talked, you know, talked to Mr. Medler about this, um, and tried to prep him, prep everyone for this. Um, we did see this coming. Um, but it's, it's definitely something that is needed here at the city. This isn't something we can uh, not look at. Now, we could go look at, potentially, at other vendors. Um, but as I, as I kind of spoke to, um, the city has been very pleased with the service we've been provided. Um, and one other aspect that was, that was mentioned was, you know, how does this compare to bringing on an IT employee, um, you know, as a staff member? Um, number one, IT employees are not cheap. Um, there's a good chance, and, and it's, it's very difficult to find one that would be part-time. Uh, it's, you know, looking at the sixteen to twenty-four hour range, you're not gonna typically find that. Um, they're, you know, it's just not, they're not out there. Um, so if you hire a full-time, you're looking at potentially a hundred thousand dollar salary plus benefits. Now, keep in mind, that's only, that if you had an employee like that, they would only be providing the, the support. These other things that we're paying for are subscription services, and so I'm kind of, I've kind of factored in, and this is off the, off of my, from my knowledge, we're probably in the neighborhood of twenty thousand, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the subscription services, stuff that we, we would still have to purchase, even if we had an IT employee on staff. Um, so i- in our estimation here at the staff level, uh, we still feel it's a cost savings to outsource this. Um, we feel sixteen hours um, of support, live support, being in the office, whether here or at the safety center, is very beneficial. Um, and we also feel that, that sixteen hours is not actual. We're, they're actually providing us much more than sixteen hours, um, but they've, they don't capture that in the cost. Um, so I, you know, I, I feel it's a very fair contract. Um, and it, it is unfortunate that it's gone up this much, but I believe it, it's something we would like to go, go move forward with, um, if, if council approves it.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor?
So, what does a workstation consist of? Hardware, is that all?
Hardware. Yep, hardware.
And going from twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-four, uh, so during that, uh, what, seven-year period of time, we've gone from fifty-three workstations to seventy-five.
Correct.
What, 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 are they mostly concentrated in one department over another?
Um, I, I'd have to look at the breakdown um, of it. I, I know we have an inventory breakdown. Um, I think you see, it, now, keep in mind, it does, this does include mobile devices, too. So, it is the iPads, so we've added several iPads in the field.
Is this a workstation that we have?
That would technically be a workstation, yeah. So, they're providing, so all that, uh, all that cyber, everything that's the backbone of it, once you're on, on the network, when you're accessing the network, those are all considered the workstations that they would be um, they would be overseeing. Um, so, we've added a lot of workstations in the sense of iPad, you know, our um, our property maintenance. We've got a, an iPad for him to be in the field, so I could, I could get that breakdown of the inventory of where it's at. Um, but it, it is a lot of that mobile device stuff.
Any other, yes, Mr. Hart?
Um, are there any, because of going to a more robust system, are there any potential insurance savings that we may realize on this?
I, I asked that exact question um, to, to our representative through PEP. Um, and they're, unfortunately, at this point, i- i- I was surprised, too. No. To answer the question, no, there is not. Um, we do have a, our coverage is a, basically, we have a million dollars in cybersecurity, so that pays for, basically, if we would get, if we would get hacked, um, that pays for a lot of the forensic testing, forensic data accumulation that would have to take place to figure out how you were hacked. Um, so to, to answer that question simply, no, there is not a cost savings to the insurance.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ping?
Um, just a more of an observation, a question. Uh, from a, the perspective of hiring, I, I know what, what, what you're talking about is, is very applicable to the size of organization we have. It, it, you know, the, there are many other things that play into that, too, like availability of the IT person that you have hired versus a staff of people that's at a company like this. So, there's a lot of benefit in that regard. Um, one thing that I would encourage you to ask them about or engage them in is, if they're not already doing it, is stress testing things once in a while, which is basically having a white hat hacker that tries to finagle their way in. Um, you know, th- this is a huge, huge problem if these people get in. And so, obviously, anything we can do proactive in that regard would be beneficial. And so, I'm sure that, uh, if they don't offer that service, they know someone that can provide that. And I think that would be a really beneficial thing to do once in a while, if they're not, they may already be doing it.
I, I agree a hundred percent. Um, just to take it one more, one step farther, one, one of the, it's, because it wasn't really a CI people, one of the things in the twenty-twenty-five budget is, we've really, we did a internal audit, well, we did an audit that was, we had, we hired someone to come in and audit our water system for cybersecurity, because that is, in my opinion, that's the most vulnerable side, um, most, the scariest side. Um, so, in the, in the twenty-twenty-five budget, there is a line item in there for cybersecurity enhancements, because that's actually on a separate network. So, we keep all the water system, that's on a separate network, that's not tied to the, the city network, um, and that's, that's obvious, that's for obvious reasons. Um, remote, remote, um, you know, logging in remotely and those kinds of things, we're, we're implementing a new software. Um, it's called Bomb Guard for the waterside. So, just taking that comment about cybersecurity, um, we've been, we've really looked at it. We actually applied for a cybersecurity grant, I haven't heard back yet, um, for some of these services on the waterside. Um, so we are paying attention to it, because it, for some reason, it doesn't get, I mean, I get, I hear about it through my affiliations with AWWA and different things, but there's a lot, there's a lot of hacks happening on a daily basis to municipalities, and they're costly. Um, so yes, we're keeping an eye on it.
Any, yes, Mr. Bateman?
Uh, just wanted to uh, thank you for taking a, a good look at this and careful. I also appreciate the, you mentioned an IT board. So, if we are gonna go this route of a managed IT services, I like the fact that there is a sort of consortium internally that's got an eye on uh, issues as they may arise, or forecasting, to Mr. Ping's point, uh, you know, maybe areas where we may be vulnerable. So, uh, glad to hear about that as well.
Yeah, we, we try to meet once a month, doesn't always happen, but we try to meet to, one of the biggest, one of the biggest things we want to accomplish here going forward is, you men, uh, uh, Mr. Hart, you did mention, you know, I, and I respect the comment of everything under one umbrella. You were referencing some of the software programs. But we're looking at the same thing on a global, global uh, way at, between the Police Department, Fire Department. In fact, we're gonna be look, this is a little different, but we're looking at the web, our website currently through Civic Plus. You know, the Fire Department, we're actually talking about getting in with them and, and getting under one umbrella for better pricing. So, that's something we're looking at going forward, specifically with this, with IT, the IT services, making sure we're all kind of doing the same thing, so that we can see some of that cost, cost benefit by having more people involved, so.
Anyone else? All right, read the resolution, please. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Velocor Services for information technology managed services. You call the roll, please. Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey. Resolution ninety-five is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy?
So, um, on November twelfth, City Council authorized the submission of a annexation of city-owned property along Kemper Road. That annexation petition was submitted on November nineteenth to the Hamilton County Commissioner's Office. Per the Ohio revised code, prior, twenty days prior to the Commissioner's holding their formal hearing, City Council is required to adopt legislation stating the services that they will provide to the subject property if it is annexed into the city corporation limits. Subject property is five city-owned parcels consisting of twenty-one point six one nine acres of land that makes up the Polk Run Sewer Treatment Plant. Uh, this property became contiguous to the city limits uh, following the annexation of forty-seven acres along uh, Toy-Twee and Love of Madeira Road, commonly called the Stiver Kennedy Caden Annexation, that then met the ten percent uh, requirement. With that, uh, the, we actually passed the legislation uh, along all of the city staff members, and so these, when you see this legislation as part of an annexation, uh, the Exhibit A, that has been updated by all of the department heads. We keep that sort of fresh. It's always a pretty good sign of what goes on in the city. So, um, this is just the first step. Uh, once the hearing is done, if all goes well, there'll be one final legislation brought back to City Council uh, to accept the, formally accept the annexation.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Yes.
To your point, Mr. Kennedy, I, you know, it, if you ever wonder where your tax dollars are going, this is great, because it's very comprehensive. Thank you.
Anything else? Read the resolution, please. Resolution setting forth services that will be provided by the City of Loveland to the owner of rural property located in Sims Township, Hamilton County, if such area is annexed to the City of Loveland, and stating an approximate date by which such services will be available if annexed. Thank you. Call the roll, please. Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Resolution ninety-six is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy?
So, obviously, we're pretty excited about the amphitheater project in Nissan Park. City Council recently authorized uh, the submission of a grant to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the amphitheater in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. That uh, application has been submitted. Uh, total project cost is one million four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven. City has budgeted, identified, and secured its local share of five hundred and four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven uh, dollars. So, what we were hoping, what we were thinking as we, we looked at this project, which will be one of the more most significant park projects we've done in many, many years, is uh, if the city is funded, we'll be finding out in early twenty-twenty-five, uh, having not done any of the design, anything more than uh, renderings. I reached out to KZF, and I asked them, of the proposal for all the engineering design, everything to get us through construction, uh, where would be the next logical steps? They recommended the city doing the schematic uh, and the survey work, that would put us in a good situation, that if the city is funded, we could move along relatively quickly and still get this project uh, finished and wrapped up before the sesquicentennial uh, hearing, uh, I'm sorry, the sesquicentennial celebration in twenty-twenty-six. So, we're, uh, this would be a, a good first step for the city. And remember that the fifty-eight thousand one hundred dollars to do the schematic design and all the survey work is included in the cost estimate, would come off the city's local match that we would be paying. I would recommend that we use the Verizon funds for this. That way, we're using the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar we got through the state capital budget, uh, the one-time strategic fund that will be reserved for uh, the construction, the nature works, uh, the land-water conservation fund would be used for that. I called ODNR Land Water Conservation Fund, just wanted to make sure that there's no problem with us advancing this project. Would it then diminish the total project cost below the one million? Uh, and they said, no, they actually encourage communities to be going forward with this project. So, this is the way, uh, this would get us started. We would begin uh, throughout the winter, we'd have schematics, we'd have all the survey work, we could address, we would be able to address some of the public input issues. This would be the time we would factor in some potential sound barriers. This would be the time we would factor in some potential sound barriers along the wall, the back wall and some of the other items that came up during the public input process.
Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor?
I just would, having looked at this, the Exhibit A to your memo, Dave, is the letter from KZF Design.
Yes.
On page 57, there's a discrepancy between the compensation amount, which appears in numerical number of 145,110. And the written out number, which is 139,000.
Yeah, there was an error in that. I think they were originally factoring in the construction supervision. She took it out of the bottom, but didn't change the top. So at this point, we're only going after the 58,100 of it. And this is a benefit for KZF that most, not every engineering architect, design firm is going to let you piece, little pieces of it at a time. As you decide to, so they, we appreciate them letting us pick away at this rather than saying, no, you must approve the whole thing. But yeah, there was also a discrepancy up in the construction costs, but that's not a major factor. That has not been updated. But yeah, we would be doing the schematic design 25% submittal and the survey work, the 91. If we are deep into the project and decide that we want to go ahead with the geotechnical, I can do that within my spending limits.
Any further comment, questions? Read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with KZF Design for completion of the schematic design and surveying for the Nesbit Park Amphitheater.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Resolution 97 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Kennedy?
The City Council Legislation Ordinance 2024-79 for the water rate increase and the storm water increase. That City Council approved at the October 22nd, 2024 meeting. I had a error, a typographical error in that legislation and we caught that error. Apologize for that. I did not carry the new rates down to the the lower section of the legislation. Does not impact in any way, shape or form what council approved. It's still a 3% raise and a 50% per ERU. But. We, we need it to be correct. I corrected, I put a red line attached to the memo and then a clean copy of the new legislation. This is, we would go ahead and pass this as an emergency so we can get it in line and set the, it was scheduled to go into effect with January due bills. Which would be the bills that are be, will go out in December. Again, these are the same numbers. It's just correcting a error on the legislation. I did not carry the numbers down below.
All right, any comment, question? Read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance repealing and replacing Ordinance 2024-79, amending Loveland Code of Ordinances Chapter 111, schedule of fees, fines and other charges. To revise fees charged for water and storm water utility service and declaring an emergency.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ordinance 98 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Kennedy?
So Chris, Mark and I are just going to tag team a little bit, but this is the, we're presenting to you the first reading of the 2025 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program. This follows the city's staff CIP presentation earlier this evening. And I just wanted to touch a couple of things and then Mark will jump in real quick. So the 2025 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program, as we mentioned, we started this largely back in June into July. This was our second year utilizing the software, which has really been a benefit. We purchased that budgeting software, knowing that they were still tweaking and making some changes to it. And I believe we actually played a little bit of role in some of the tweaks that they made. It is very customized to this city and is a real benefit. This is actually a benefit, a benefit to the Finance Commission. Some of the items that we touched on, and I touched on it briefly, is the with the, we. One of the items, you'll notice that some of the highlights or lowlights or. Overviews was we are expecting a $555,000 decrease in income tax in 2024 over, in 2025, under the 2024 estimates. Now that is offset somewhat by a roughly $133,000 increase in real estate taxes that will offset the 555. I think Mark sort of calls it our new norm base upon which we will build on our income tax. I will point out that with the most recent valuations for the city, for the first time in the history, the city went over a half a billion dollars. In total valuations at 547,648,000. That's actually a 35% increase over the last 10 years of 238 million dollar valuation increase. That's a pretty significant. And when I talk about valuations, which is something we always sort of look at. It's, it's sort of, it comes from a lot of places. It comes from Chimney Ridge, it comes from an investment in the downtown district. But what I want to point out, and I think it's important, is the, the next, what I like to consider the next frontier, which is the Loveland Madeira Road revitalization that Chris talked about earlier today. If you are a community that is largely not going to see large residential developments in the future. And you're in that infill stage, which we are full board in an infill stage at this period of time. Creating redoing, basically the city is doing its own infill redevelopment of the Love of Madeira Road Business District. So I can't emphasize enough how important it is as we look through basically, best way to say from DVD Brew to West Loveland. A complete and total redo of that and then the corresponding private investment. Jobs and everything that will go along with that redo. And it didn't hurt that the city has cleaned up the Chestnut Tree property, bought the Brogan property to create access to the Chestnut Tree property. And most recently purchased the Denisi Mirror. That is what we're seeing, what the city's doing with, on our own, which we obviously anticipate. I often sort of, I was just thinking to myself, if you went away 10 years ago and you came back into downtown today after 10 years, would you go, holy, you know what? I'd like to think that 10 years from now, you'll look at Love of Madeira Road and go, wow. I went away for 10 years and I came back and I certainly think that's the plan. And with that, that will really allow this to take marks, what he's called the new, our new normal, the income tax and just see that start to grow. So I, I think that's a really important aspect. I also want to emphasize two items. The WMR fee that City Council enacted, I got to tell you, and I'm not trying to be dramatic, but it is, it is a significant game changer to this city. Both last year's Love of Madeira, Love of Miamiville Road sidewalks, this year's Love of Miamiville Road sidewalks, the Cherokee Project. The water portion of the West Loveland Streetscape Project and on and on. Those, those are storm water and sidewalk projects that might not have been able to occur if there was not the WMR money to fund it. And at the same period of time, you're going to see a decrease in water debt from the water fund of 23,600 and some change. Which is just off, which I think allowed, partly allowed you to only keep your most recent water rate increase at 3%. Those are all very important factors, but the, the WMR runs a very nice balance, runs a good, solid balance. It has funding available at all times. It's constantly being reseeded. It was done in a very, very fair manner in the sense that it is across the board, one time charge per unit. And that is, I, I really want to commit counsel because being able to do water projects and not take on any more water debt is significant. Before I turn it over to Mark, I just want to emphasize the value that the Finance Commission brings to these. This is, these are not fun meetings. These are. In depth, line by line, going through, and Councilmember Hart's on that committee. These are true stewards. They're not afraid to tell us, ask us very detailed questions. And I can't say enough that role that they play in giving a fiscally responsible budget. That they do, asking some of the most in-depth questions and remembering the exact number of police officers we had this year, last year versus this year. Did I, am I right that the, that the, that the software budget just went up by this much? So it's, I really want to point that out and I would have said that whether Mike was in the audience or not. So I want to turn this over to to Mark to give us a little more detail on what you're actually approving tonight.
Right, so, yeah, fun, maybe not the good word for it for the Finance Commission, but definitely important. Definitely essential to have our community members out there looking over things, giving us pointers, you know, calling us out when we need it. And kind of working with us through, through the process. I might get grumbly sometime, but you know, I, I understand their, their purpose and we're all pretty professional, I think. And at the end of the day, I think we've got a budget that has been crafted that I think we can be proud of and we can be confident that that's going to be balanced. So, as Mr. Kennedy said, so we're approving the appropriations, which is the expenditure budgets. So whenever we have the budget document, which comes out later, mentions revenues, those are there more for context of this is what we think we're going to have. This is what we've told the county that these are our sources. So the only thing that's an actual budget is the expenditures, which is that what you're seeing in the attachment. So in the general fund, we're having expenditures of 10,838,685. Citywide, 38,374,244. So as Mr. Kennedy mentioned, with our expected new normal for income tax, we've kind of got us. What we think is a very solid foundation of where we are going forward. For whatever reasons, for more people going back to offices and not working from home. We think we're at a good spot for going forward. We're not seeing any, anything like a free fall or anything like continuing going down. I think we're pretty stable going forward and we feel like these numbers are good. They're not padded, they're conservative like we're supposed to be, and I think we're going to be fine. So we're, no, no such thing as deficit, deficit spending here. We've got our general fund balance, but then in 25, the revenues from 25 are going to cover the expenditures for 25 in the general fund. The, that's the, few years ago, there was just the key phrase that went along, they said structurally balanced, that's what that means. So we're not using our fund balance to plug any holes for 2025. So we covered that with lower costs related to our special projects. The general fund isn't sending quite as much money into the special projects fund. It's not covering the streets fund quite as much it has in years past because of the road rehab. We've got lower outside contract services and we have fewer costs related to vehicles. Police Department did a good job in actually purchasing some vehicles that we had been leasing. And that's going to cover and give us some savings at the end of the year. So that's pretty much the general idea of our, our budget. As I said, we feel pretty good about it. And if you have any questions, I can address that and also to let you know that at the next meeting, we're going to have. Some legislation to finalize where we are with 2024 budget, just to clean that up with our actual expectations for expenses.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Hart?
Couple of comments. One, I would just like to thank the people, the Finance Commission. These are some extremely intelligent people who pore over that budget as if it's their own home budget. With the same fervor that they would. You know, Mr. Mather's not wrong, they do get a little tense at times because money makes people tense, but it's all well intentioned. I think people, these are people that are volunteering their time. Not just during the meeting times, but going over those budgets is very tedious work. And there is, they, like I said, they're extremely intelligent and use words sometimes that I have no idea what they're talking about. I have to ask for clarification there. They do an amazing job of going through that and their time is very valuable to the city. And personal thank you. I'm also impressed every time I sit down with them, listen to them go over that budget.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions? All right, go ahead and. Read the ordinance.
Ordinance to make appropriate, let me start over. Ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Loveland, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
All right, thank you. It was a first reading only. Mr. Kennedy?
So the tree ordinance, actually Vice Mayor Phelps just mentioned that many trees have grown in the time it's taken us to write this tree ordinance. But I do think it's, I do think it is a very, very. It's a good document and I, I think in it, it will, if properly managed by Sean Hartness, who will be the tree city forester, I think it will have a significant. Impact to the, the tree canopy in the city. And I think we're pretty close to where Cindy Kessler, so when she really explained to the city and wrote, opened our eyes about the importance of trees to this. This is a direct result of Cindy's work. The Assistant Public Works Director was a result of Cindy's passion. And so with that, the tree environment, we had a tag team, a committee, tag team with, between the tree and environment and the Law and Ordinance Committee. And it was very interesting to see the two different perspectives. One very set on procedure, one a little more of the staunch, let's, what are the rules? That would be law and ordinance. And then the other one, much more detailed about what we need to do to protect trees. How do we recognize certain trees and protect them? And so on and so forth, holding the city feet to the fire to make sure there's regulations in there regarding protections of other species. So this, the, the current tree ordinances, if you want to call it an ordinance, our current tree regulations fall under 90513. They're somewhat generic. They do set the baseline that all trees along the right of way are the adjacent property owners. The permitting process is almost nonexistent. There's no selection, there's no species selection, there's no location, there's no recognizing of underground utilities and overground, overhead utilities. There's no emphasis on native species and so on and so forth. So this new program, which will be administered by the city forester. It first of all clears, definitely clears up the permitting process. And we have no fee on the permitting process. We see that as a city service. A new tree to be, a tree to be removed, a tree to be planted. We are simply asking that you do an online application that would get triggered to, through our software right now, the same software that people go to that. There's a street light out, there's a dead animal, there's a water leak that would trigger the tree permit. That would require allow the city to be onsite with the underground maps, the utility locations, the particular trees. We would get, we would be able to build a partnership with the residents to make smart decisions. We've all seen trees that are wrapped in wires or have been cut into very unique shapes to get around the wires. That was a poor tree selection. Duke does their job. We can also say that it's probably the leading cause to power outages. We've also seen missed opportunities, is actually how I met Cindy. I put that picture in there because of Tender Town. There's a perfect example of a, where the city sort of failed because we didn't look at an opportunity with no wires with anywhere in sight. And we allowed very small novelty ornamental trees to be planted. That's, I'm not kidding, is actually how I met Cindy because we both looked at that. I cannot drive past there today without going to Yelza. What were we thinking? So part of this is also to make good choices. Smart trees being planted now, and the city being involved is a guidance. Trees that are planted too close to the right of way are going to be taken to the intersections, are going to have to be removed. Trees that are planted on top of power lines, new water lines are all going to be a trouble. So by creating this partnership, we think that we will see a much, a great impact in the future. And there's really no more undue burden on a resident than the existing codes have. They're just largely not enforced. This will also create a tree revenue for the tree fund. This isn't any large amount of money, but the Tree and Environment Committee with a few hundred dollars here and there can do some significant tree plantings. You buy whips, you buy saplings. I think ultimately, we'd like to still see the city put in a tree nursery where whips are planted and then brought out as possible. We'll also be able to. We'll also be able to recognize there are certain trees that, needless to say, a tree that's getting, a city is getting ready for a sescuit centennial, has some significant trees that should be protected, should be recognized, the city will actually take ownership. In my former community, we actually called those witness trees that we are identifying here as specimen trees. And all in all, if administer, and I have no doubt Sean and the Tree and Environment Committee will administer this properly, I think you will see a significant improvement to where trees are planted, which trees are selected. We actually put ourselves on the line here under certain, the city will follow the same rules that we followed for the tree removals part of the new parking lot, that is the October through March period of time, there are certain provisions for emergencies, but we will then, protection of the Indiana bat, we will do everything in our power to follow those rules. There are certain provisions where those can be modified, but we will do everything possible. Those are, that's an important aspect of what we're doing here and so on and so forth. So pretty happy with this ordinance and I can't salute Law and Ordinance and Tree and Environment enough for their efforts. Again, this is no undue burden, it's a, it does have a corresponding three-step process. One would be the first reading of this ordinance, one would be, the next would be the first reading of an ordinance rescinding 90513 because it'll conflict, it'll just be reserved for future numbers. And the other one is an amendment to 111 to allow the fund to be put in place. After your second reading at your meeting in December, I'll go ahead and formally appoint, then that position will exist, we'll go ahead and appoint Sean Harkness as the city forester and as you can see in the ordinance, they're significant. He has the authority to do what needs to be done to enforce this, but I really see this as a partnership with our residents, that's why there's no fee. It's simply a circus, that's all I had.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Bateman?
Just a question about, like you mentioned earlier about infield, infield development and how would this relate to, you know, the responsibility of a developer to populate, you know, whether it's buffers or screens on the perimeter there?
That will come in the corresponding zoning amendments that Chris and Eva are working with McBride Dale. This isn't really over the developers, that is separate. That would be an example of more in line with what I was talking about in front of Tender Town. If the right codes were in place, it would have said in conjunction with this, as upon review by the city forester, the zoning code requires if, if overhead utility lines are within a certain amount of distance, the following oaks and maples and lindens are all recommended trees to promote the full growth and so on and so forth. So, yeah, this has a corresponding impact with what Chris will be bringing to the city later.
So there would be like something within the zoning code that would be referencing this new?
Landscape, yeah, landscape guidelines, yes.
Perfect.
Any other questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just speak up for Law and Ordinance Committee that it was, this was a unique opportunity to sort of work with another committee to address these issues that while not, you know, as important as other city issues, I think because we had an absence of any regulation basically, or coherent legislation, regulation, this is filling a void and I think it will make things easier. And we're not saying by the passing of this legislation that, you know, we're, we're being, you know, heavy-handed regulators or anybody that's got a tree on their private property is going to have to check it against the, the legislation here, it's not the case. It's really addressing those trees that, you know, deal, are, are close to or contiguous with right-of-ways, like he was mentioning the utility lines and then public property too. And it's, I think, a sign of a mature, more sophisticated Loveland that we're moving in this direction and I think it will ultimately help just the entire environmental milieu that we enjoy in this city in terms of a lot of good trees, but they'll be even better now because some of the things that would otherwise maybe get planted in years past won't with these guidelines, at least not on, on public property. Okay?
Yeah, any other comment? Ping?
Just a, a quick comment, I, I don't think, I, I know that several of us are not big fans of regulations and heavy-handed government and so forth and, you know, when I look at this, I, I don't see that. You know, when Ms. Kessler first brought this to council's attention and, and took her own time and energy to meet with each of us individually and, and go through things, I know many of the pictures she showed of different cities that she has visited that have implemented tree programs like this and have a forester, they're just beautiful places and, you know, to, to Mr. Phelps' comment, you know, this is the kind of thing that you do so that, i- i- it's cliched, but it's the kind of thing that you do so your grandchildren will have a beautiful place to live. Trees are not something that we're going to just fix overnight, but this kind of legislation I think is perfect for creating an impact that beautifies a community over a period of time. And so getting rid of some of the, the gnarled trees around the power lines and things, I mean, that, that's not trivial in terms of the streetscape. And so, you know, I, I think even though there is a regulatory aspect to this, both, both of the committees that were involved in this have done a good job of balancing that and when you read this, it's not heavy-handed, it's not a huge regulation, it's not going to be a huge burden, it's really just steering things to make sure that the city has a uniform and coherent approach to these things. So I, I think it's, it's great that we have this in front of us and I'm, I'm happy to see it, even though it's regulation.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we're going to read the first ordinance.
Ordinance enacting Chapter 906, Tree Maintenance, Protection, Preservation, Removal and Restoration of the City of Loveland Codified Ordin-, Codified Code of Ordinances.
You, I'm going to read the next ordinance.
Ordinance adopting Section 111, refund of the Codified Ordinances of Loveland.
And the last ordinance?
Ordinance repealing Chapter 905.13 of the Codified Ordinances of Loveland.
Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, so the city's charter, Section 2.05 of the city's charter requires that there be no less than two meetings a month, excepting for the month of December, if five council members agree. We, Chris and I went over everything we foresee in the agenda in December and the second meeting in the month would be on Christmas Eve, city council could cancel the meeting, they could go me, second and third Tuesday, or they do have the option to just cancel the second meeting in December and it's a non-election year and based upon Chris and I's going over what we have, we didn't see a need for that, give everybody a nice break and we would return to a very active council meeting on January 14th. So it'd be a pretty significant break if, if council so chooses.
All right, so you're looking for a motion to hold only one meeting in December?
Yes, ma'am.
Make the motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. As far as announcements, the Little Miami River Chamber Alliance held their 2024 Annual Awards Dinner last Thursday. Mr. Weinich and Mrs. Clark, Mr. Kennedy, Captain Ganglar, Julie Robinson, our HR Director, Councilmembers Ping, Goodyear, myself, Hart, you were there, and Ori. Did I get everybody at our table? It was a full house. So I thought it was fun because actually Loveland ran the table and won every award. So the Randy K. Stanford Health Wellness and Fitness Business of the Year was premier tumbling and dance. Beautification Award was Oasis Turf and Tree. Business Community Advocate Award, Loveland City School District Bruce Mitchell. Patricia Futterer Community Involvement Award, Gary Giver. Community Responder Award, Loveland Sims Fire Department. Nonprofit of the Year Award, Life Food Pantry. Woman-owned Business of the Year, Bike Trail Books. Hidden Hero Award, Terry Bean, who we all know and love. Best Customer Service Award was The Works. The Chamber also has a, the Chamber Choice Award, that was Quilter's Studio. Young Professional of the Year was Emily Barlow of Loveland Lifestyle Magazine. Emerging Business of the Year, Railway Barber Shop. And Business of the Year was the 1859. So that was a, that was a good night. Announcements, there's a whole page of announcements. Offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Tree and Environment Committee is exploring the idea of establishing an official city tree, similar to how the State of Ohio named the Buckeye as its official tree. Residents can vote for the tree by visiting the website, www.lovelandoh.gov. The options are American Sycamore, Eastern Redbud, or the White Oak. Loveland Sustainability Council is promoting the Great Holiday Light Challenge. It's a competition between Loveland Miami Township and Sims Township to see who recycles the most used holiday lights. There will be a drop-off in our lobby, I believe, starting November 30th through January 31st. So do not throw away your broken lights, bring them here, please. Be sure to support our local businesses on Small Business Saturday, November 30th and throughout the entire holiday season. Loveland's Christmas Tree Lighting Festival will be held on Saturday, December 7th from four to eight. Festivities include the Winter Holiday Market, holiday entertainment by, with performances by American Idol finalist Michael Williams, the Claremont County Coral, Coral, is that how you pronounce it?
Coral.
Coral, Coral. Some singers. And Anita and the Daves, kids crafts, Christmas train rides, gingerbread house decorating contest, Christmas tree decorating contest, holiday characters, photo opportunities, food trucks, visits with Santa, tree lighting at apparently exactly 7:46 PM, not 7:47, followed by a holiday-themed drone show by Rosy's Fireworks and this event is sponsored by the City of Loveland as well as Loveland Sims Firefighters Association. I guess the only other thing, it is Thanksgiving, so a good time to say thanks. And as I sat here tonight and listened to the CIP segment of our evening and listened really to just all of our staff and, and how much passion they have for, for what they do for the city, I can't help but be thankful for, I think we have a really wonderful staff in the City of Loveland and you do a fantastic job all year, so thank you all. Also thinking of, we talked about various commissions and committees throughout tonight and we have a lot of committee members in the audience, so thankful to our committees and commissions and boards that, that keep this city moving, so thanks to all of you. Thanks to, to who I sit with, not quite as much thanks as to everyone else, but I do, do thank you all, it is a pleasure working with all of you all year long, so I hope everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Anyone else have any announcements? I believe unfortunately, we have an executive session. Anyone care to make a motion?
I will move to go to executive session under Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3 to conference with council related to pending litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.[1424.83]
We on? Alright, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll please. Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Your pain?
Yes.
Motion carries. Debra. Alright, happy Thanksgiving all.